So I believe we have a call.
We do.
In this room or in this room? I'd like to call the meeting of the committee on facilities management. We have just really two action items.
All right.
Four action items on the policy calendar and approval of minutes. So the first item, the approval of minutes.
Certainly.
Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. So on the policy calendar, we have four items. And I thought Iris could walk through all four of them and then vote on them as one thing.
Sure. And after the items, I guess you'll notice, but we're going to do a presentation of a major project at Brooklyn College. The first item is a resolution authorizing renovation work under the terms of the board's budget resolution as of November 26, 2007. This resolution enables facilities management to authorize the dormitory authority of the state of New York to enter into contracts for projects up to $10 million. These projects are covered under the lump sum budget categories in accordance with the capital budget previously approved by the Board of Trustees. Projects which fall into this category are health and safety, facilities preservation, critical maintenance for senior colleges, and energy conservation. Contracts left by DASNY in excess of the threshold to be established by the trustees and contracts which will be executed directly by CUNY or CUCF will be presented to the trustees for approval. I might add that we are doing a record amount of work under the lump sum category. And I think that, I know that, the colleges will start to see a tremendous amount of activity on the campuses. The next item is a resolution authorizing and the execution of a customer installation commitments under the Encore Agreement between CUNY and the New York Power Authority. This resolution authorizes the executive director of DTCM, who is Bob Lemieux, to execute work orders under the CUNY-NIPA Energy Performance Contract and authorizes the Dormitory Authority to provide supplementary capital funds for certain energy efficient projects performed via the contract. There is currently $40 million in our capital contract under the energy lump sum. And the projects that will be covered under this contract are a Barug summer boiler project, College of Staten Island 6S ventilation project, the New York City College of Technology Central Plant Project, Bronx Community College Central Plant Project, and the CUNY Senior College Internet Energy Monitoring System and Expansion Program. Under the NIPA-CUNY program, NIPA provides program management implementation services. And most importantly, it advances funding for energy efficient projects. The cost of these projects are covered through a surcharge of the CUNY utility bills and offset by any energy savings that CUNY may realize. For critical infrastructure projects where savings do not fully offset costs, supplementary CUNY capital funds are necessary to enable the implementation of these projects. The next item is a resolution to authorize a lease agreement at Two Metro Tech in Brooklyn on behalf of a CUNY central office. And I think this committee will remember, a few months ago, we brought this item. Since that item was brought, we originally were going to take 245,000 square feet at Metro Tech. Forest City Ratner, who is the landlord at that location, advised us in June that PSYAC will be giving up most of the building now, all the space that they have, which included about another 105,000 square feet. We began to talk internally about alternative uses that we could put into Metro Tech. And our goal here is to have only a handful of locations for CUNY, one being 80th Street, one being Metro Tech. We site at 41st Street, which has the RF and has part of our financial organization. And we have some uses which will stay at 31st Street at Sixth Avenue. So this new lease at Metro Tech will allow the university to now consolidate other operations. And some of the operations that we're looking at is a number of the colleges, both New York City Tech and MedGrevers, have leases that are coming due at Metro Tech, about 70,000 square feet of space, which we would like to consolidate into this building if we could. Another alternative is the School of Professional Studies is looking for a home. We had discussions with John Mogulescu. And in addition, we took his staff to the site to look at this Metro Tech site. And I might add that this is a great location for mass transportation, almost all the trains stop there. And the landlord is amenable to having classroom space in the building, which we're finding more and more landlords do not want to have. And it would be nice to be able to control most of the building for CUNY use. So we are asking that the board reconsider and vote on this additional 105,000 square feet. The last resolution is to authorize a lease agreement at 3020 Thompson Avenue in Long Island City on behalf of LaGuardia College. This resolution is authorizing the execution of an 11-year lease for approximately 181,000 square feet of classroom space at 3020 Thompson Avenue. This building is also known as IDCNY Center 2 Building, but it's also the site of the DeVry School. And they will be vacating the space. LaGuardia College currently has a lease for 60,000 square feet at 4535 Van Damme Street. It's the Maria LaGuardia Building. We will be, that lease will be expiring on April of 2009. And so therefore, we will fold that use that's there into this new space of 181,000 square feet. The college will also be using the additional space, because this is great space. It's totally built out, the classrooms are there. They will be able to use the space day one for additional classroom space as well as administrative space. And I might add that this classroom space is badly needed by LaGuardia College. And it's good to have or be in a position where we don't have to do any capital construction, where we can just go in and turn on the lights and start educating the students. So, Mr. Chairman, those are the four items for consideration.
Any questions on any of the items?
Two quick questions. On the additional space at Two Metro Tech, I didn't read, I'm not reading carefully, but was there any additional consideration by the landlord for our base rent in return for taking any additional square footage?
It wasn't in the base rent, but we got a extended period of time of free rent. So we had a certain period of time, and now we're getting more time for free rent.
Okay.
So if you amortize it over the term of the lease, then the rent came down a bit.
Okay. That's good. And the other question was on the power authority piece. Do we have any sense on how much additional capital might be required where they don't fully offset? Is there some estimate or will it be a project by project?
It's going to be project by project, and we're not at that point yet. But I would like to tell the committee that, you know, we have additional funding in this lump sum category. And so if there are additional costs, we believe we'll be able to-
It's almost a reserve sitting there.
Yes, we'll be able to cover it.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my only questions.
On the LaGuardia lease agreement, I should note that the new facility is very close to the existing classroom space, just down the sidewalk. And so it's really an easy walk for the students. And I'd like to congratulate you on getting that space. Anything else?
Well, you should actually congratulate the college president because she brought it to our attention and she was-
Very cool. Kudos to her.
She was Johnny on the spot.
Very good.
Anything else? All right. Motion?
The adoption of war force.
Second?
Seconded.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm very pleased to introduce the next individual and the next project. Brooklyn College, a number of years ago, was very fortunate to get a very substantial gift from Leonard Tao to help the college build a new performing arts center at the college. The original idea was to keep the two existing theater buildings that existed at Brooklyn College. And there was a fair amount of space in between those two buildings to wedge another building in between. Working with the college and with the next individual who I'm going to introduce, it became very clear to us that really what needed to be done is to look at the age and the facility known as Gershwin Hall and to look at its feasibility in terms of whether it really still needed to exist in the current structure that it did. And the university, the college along with the division had hired Pfeiffer Partners to look at this original concept. I might add that the college and their theater arts group, their music group, was really terrific in terms of working with Pfeiffer Partners and working with our division to try and ascertain what would be the best use for the college and what would be the best building for the college. We believe now that we have a pretty spectacular plan. And we would like to share that with the committee because we're going to begin in earnest now to move on this project. I just want to add one other thing that, as this committee knows, because we've discussed it here, in our arrangement with DASNY, we no longer have to use DASNY as our construction manager. And I'm very pleased to announce that this will probably be one of the first projects that we do in-house ourselves, not using DASNY services. So I'm going to introduce Jean Gaff. Jean is a principal at Pfeiffer Partners, really a planner. And she has really stuck with us over this last year in terms of one original idea and now the idea that we have, we've come up with. And, you know, it truly was a planning process. And we're very pleased that, you know, Pfeiffer Partners is involved in this project. And I'll turn it over to Jean.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to be here. What you're seeing today is really the beginning of the process. We have been working for about the past three months very diligently with the college, the departments of music and the department of theater to really balance their programmatic needs with the site area we have available and the funds we have available. So we're in sort of the middle of schematic design. But as Iris mentioned, the college has been very good about working with us to balance their needs with the budgets we have available. Just a little bit of overview, the project that you're going to see is about 62,000-
Can we load the lights a little bit?
Oh, what happened to that? It went purple all of a sudden.
Jiggle the wire.
Jiggle the BGA.
Jiggle the wire.
Oh, there it is.
Wow. High-tech, not, well, okay.
Probably better that you can't see the mic.
I can't see the computer.
Oh, wait. Oh, it's pretty tiny. It's like kicking the-
It is literally.
Well, just so you know, everything that's orange up there is green on my screen, so God knows what the building's going to look like. But so the color might be a little bit off. So what you're going to see is a project of about 62,000 square feet of badly needed both performance and rehearsal hall space. The key component of this project is a 250-seat flexible theater that will work to meet the performance needs of both theater as well as music. Apart, though, from what this will do for the badly needed facilities for music and theater, this project also offers a wonderful opportunity. It also creates a new image and new identity, a new front door for the Brooklyn College campus. What it does, though, is it requires the demolition of the existing Gershwin Building, which I'll talk about very briefly. And just in terms of the schedule, we hope to begin the demolition in the fall of next year, beginning construction in January 2010 and being open sort of for business in January 2012. Just a little bit about the building, this is the existing Gershwin Building, which, we're back to the original color. This building fronts on one of the key streets bounding the campus, on Campus Road. Within Gershwin Hall today, there's a 500-seat proscenium theater. There is a 150-seat recital hall for music, about 8,000 square feet of instructional space, and then some offices for both music theater and the performing arts organization that's associated with Whitman Hall. There's a lot of space in there, so the issue is not the quantity of the space, but really the quality of the space. Gershwin Hall is very much in need of repair. It was a building built in the late, mid to late 50s that has not seen a lot of repair or refurbishment. There's no real dedicated space for scene shot, for the building of sets for construction to put on theatrical performances. The acoustics are very poor, both within the performance spaces as well as within the practice rooms themselves. So there really has not been spaces built specifically for the uses that they're meant to serve. And what this project now does is it really focuses on use-specific spaces, making sure that they meet the acoustical and theatrical requirements of both music and theater, and also create a new front door to the campus. In addition to the shared performance space, there'll also be a lobby. And we see this lobby as being sort of not only a front door to the campus, but also a wonderful opportunity to have campus activities, special events, dinners, receptions. There'll be performer support spaces, dressing rooms. There'll also be, finally, a dedicated scene shot to build sets for construction. Instructional spaces, and those really relate primarily to music instructional spaces. A lot of practice rooms. To be a music major, you have to practice, practice. So a lot of this building is about practice rooms. And then some dedicated spaces for rehearsals, both for music as well as theater. The spaces that have been elected not to be included, because again, we're living within a defined site and a defined budget, are those uses and activities that could be found elsewhere on the campus, primarily offices and classrooms, that don't need specific acoustical isolation or specific design requirements. The building that we're replacing was about 48,000 square feet. The new building will be approximately 62,000 square feet. These are the types of spaces that are envisioned in the building. Again, rooms to teach music, to practice music, music keyboard rooms, classrooms, practice rooms. And then sort of the cornerstone of this building is a shared performance space. This is not meant to be the type of performance space, but really to demonstrate, this is a room that we designed in Beaver Creek, Colorado, to demonstrate that you can indeed make a room that works great for music and great for theater. This room, which has slightly more seats, it's about 500 seats. Last year alone, this room had in it everything from the small production of the producers to hairspray, to the Gypsy Kings, to Second City, to ballet, Capitol steps, a very versatile room. And that's what we're talking about relative to this performance space at Brooklyn College, something that can meet a whole host of performance activities. This is a similar type of room in that it's very flexible. This is a room we did for Columbia State University, a room for both theater as well as for music. Another smaller community theater. What we're suggesting is a room that can vary its acoustics, can vary its stage configuration, and even while it will have some amount of permanent seating, also some flexible seating. So it allows for a whole host of performance types within the room itself. Now, because it's just one room and music and theater need to share it, what we've also suggested is giving each of those departments a specific room for rehearsal that can also double for performance space. This happens to be what we're suggesting in terms of it's a theater rehearsal room. Works great as a classroom, great as a theater rehearsal space, but could also accommodate small performances in it. So we're trying to make double duty of the rehearsal spaces to also have them double as performance space. The same would be true of music. This happens to be a music room we did at the Colburn School. Great room for rehearsals, but also a very nice room for small recitals. And when it comes to the music school's program, music majors have to do recitals all the time. So these are nice sized rooms to do small recitals where maybe you get an audience of anywhere from 25 to 30 people. So these are meant to be the types of spaces that we're looking at. So the summary of the program, a shared space for performance, a lobby, a recording studio, which is also very important, particularly as it relates to a music program, a student lounge, a place where students can come together, both for music and theater, and discuss potential collaborations. And then about 15,000 square feet of instructional spaces, the rehearsal rooms that I talked about, one that would be for instruments, another one for choral, a theater rehearsal room, music practice rooms, teaching studios, a scene shot, all of which would come together as an integrated facility. So that's what sort of goes in the building. Just two minutes on the site itself. The site is shown in red over here on the upper right-hand side of the corner of the slide. It's a long campus road in the intersection of Hill L. And sort of at the one end of the site, but a very important end because a good deal of students come from the Flatbush Avenue subway stop shown as the number two and five. So a lot of movement to and from the subways to this area of the campus. When we came to the campus, we said, you know, it's interesting how this campus evolved. When it was originally built, it was modeled after University of Virginia. Very clear kind of concept, clear idea about a central green flanked by a couple of the core buildings, the library and the classroom buildings. Bedford Avenue was a major street. The entrance was clearly identified. So it was really sort of a very coherent plan. When it got to sort of the ends of the campus, it went a little bit skewed and it didn't quite know how to deal with this sort of corner parcel. So you can see the landscape is not quite as well coordinated in terms of a landscape quad. The entry comes in and sort of branches off either to Whitman or to the core of the campus. So we said, you know, as part of this, let's not just make a building that works for music and theater, let's make a building an outdoor space that really contributes back to the life of the campus. And let's think about the public outdoor space as much as we're thinking about what goes on within the building itself. This is the edge here. This is as you're walking into the campus. If you were to look to your left, this is the Gershwin Building. And that's the entire campus edge, which some say creates a little bit of a fortress look. And so while we need to maintain security lines, we'd also like to reach out to the community and feel like this was a community building and have some level of transparency so that the life and vitality and activity of the arts can sort of be telegraphed off to the street itself. So in looking at it, what we're suggesting is coming off of Hill L Place, the red circle at the top denotes a new sort of campus portal, a new entry into the campus that would allow you to either move straight ahead over to the Whitman Hall, which brings about 2,000 students to its performances, or to the new construction shown in the light blue, or off into the quad of the campus itself. So we have to deal with how pedestrians move both to our building but also into the campus at large. And then thinking about it, here's the basic floor plan of it, and I'll walk you through it quickly. Campus security would be in a sort of new guard booth, but really sort of a tower element that would symbolize entry to the campus. And then two points of entry into the arts center itself. One immediately off of the campus entry, but recognizing that a good deal of the students will not necessarily be coming right from the subway into the building, but from the campus core. So we put a secondary entry as well, so two points of entry into the building. And then the ground floor of the building itself consists of a rather generous lobby that could seat in sort of a table configuration, about 125 people if it were to be a dinner or reception area. The area in blue is the flexible room itself, again, with about 250 seats. We're keeping the existing stage tower, because it's there now. And since we needed one anyhow, we said, why not make use of it? And that's the green area labeled as performance and storage. The rather oddly shaped corner parcel down in the light green is the scene shop where the set construction would go on. And then the yellow areas are music rehearsal rooms. And then looking at the lobby continuing down into the core of the campus. One level up, the lobby continues up. And what we're suggesting is sort of a glass bridge over to a student lounge. I think the one thing we found about the arts is a collaboration between music and theater students and amongst music students themselves. So a place where students can hang out and just get together informally. The room that we're suggesting is a performance room. We have a balcony, creates a lot of nice intimacy within the room itself. And then music rehearsal, a very large music rehearsal space, which again can double as a performance space. The sort of block of gray that I'm not labeling are bathrooms. We have plenty of bathrooms. We have women's bathrooms sized appropriately and men's bathrooms, so plenty of bathrooms. And then up on the third floor, this building is three levels up, is really sort of the core of the music departments programs. It's a whole series of practice rooms, varying in sizes from small individual practice rooms to ensemble practice rooms for about four students. The recording studio, which is connected to the music rehearsal space, and then a large choral rehearsal room. The corridors themselves have been amply sized, not only to move musical equipment, but also to allow some seating and some furniture in them, again, for students to sort of gather outside of class. So that's sort of the core of the building. We also want to take advantage of the lower levels of the building. There's currently a lower level now, so we're suggesting some programmatic elements can go below grade. So what we have down one level below the main level is not only mechanical space, but also the practice, a few key practice rooms. And then one more level below, a theater rehearsal room. So it's five stories for really just three main stories above grade. So that's the entirety of the building that fits within the roughly 62,000 square footage. That's what happens with inside the building. I'd like to just talk a little bit now about sort of the section through buildings and understand how it works three dimensionally. And then the outside. So you can see the lobby. The blue is the performance space itself with its balcony, the scene shop, the practice rooms. And then the bar on the right-hand side is really sort of the ticket for the entry, the stairs, and sort of a security booth into the campus. And then just another cross-section. The gray building on the right is the Whitman. That's the large 2,000-seat hall, which will remain. And then just one more section showing how the scene shop relates to the theater and the life. Again, that's the inside of the building. A little bit about the site itself, what we're suggesting, as shown here in the boxed in green, is we have an opportunity with this building to also create a new arts quad. So rather than sort of the undefined landscape area which currently exists between LaGuardia Library and Whitman, we're suggesting a new arts quad where, again, students could come, hang out, potentially a plaza area for informal performances, some more landscape, preserving the mature trees that are there today. And then thinking about what it looks like, and that's always the biggest question, what it looks like. Again, we're very early on in the design phase, but some of the other buildings that have been built have had to relate sort of to history. Obviously, the library has an historic architecture to it. When the library was added on to in the, I believe, late 80s, it took on, the upper right image, a very historical nature because it was adding on to probably one of the most important buildings on the campus. The lower left is Foiland Hall. But then you see some newer, more contemporary introductions, as is shown here with the Computer Center. So we have a variety of architectures to relate to. We don't have the history to relate to. The building that we're going to be relating to is the 1950s Whitman Building. And if you're not familiar with it, this is the existing amphitheater, while it was once envisioned as an amphitheater, which is the space between the Whitman Building on the right and what our new building will be on the left. So part of this is also how to deal with that outdoor amphitheater, or what was envisioned as that. But we also have the community edge to relate to. So we have a variety of different architectures that really have to be resolved in this building, the architecture of the community edge, the architecture of Whitman, and then some hint or reference back to the historic architecture on campus. The building is obviously thought about as being a predominantly brick building and how brick has been used traditionally on the campus, a simple brick pattern with coining sort of brick accents used vertically on the buildings. Our building then has a couple of different components. One is it has the campus edge along campus roads, so how we relate to that architecturally. It has- It has the campus entry, a portal, sort of a grand entrance into the campus symbolizing a major entry to Brooklyn College. It has building entries, how you get from the campus entry into the building itself. And then we think that there's an opportunity to introduce some glass and some transparency. I think what's interesting about the two existing arts buildings on campus is you have no idea what goes on inside them. They're very enigmatic. They don't telegraph the activity within. And these are buildings, anybody who's been in the arts, know they operate 24 hours a day. They're filled with activity. They're filled with energy. We believe that there's an opportunity to telegraph that energy and excitement to the outside world. So we're seeing elements of transparency in this building to bring light and vitality to the campus. So we have a transparent edge. Again, very preliminarily, this is the look you see today if you were coming down from Flatbush Avenue down Hill L. This is Gershwin, as you see it with the campus entry. And what we're suggesting is really what we're calling sort of a portal building. It's a combination of brick. It's got some historical influences, but it's also contemporary. It's about a building that will sort of stand the test of time, we hope, and continue to build on the next generation of architecture here on the campus. A lot of glass, a lot of light. I think the other thing about this building is recognizing that students come here a lot during the evening. So how this building appears at night, how it might glow and transmit a lot of natural light is important to us so that it feels safe and warming and inviting during the evening hours. So the idea of a portal and then looking through, as you can see in the rendering, to a new sort of landscape courtyard. And then here, the transition from this to maybe something like this within it, and the name of the college, either on the portal or perhaps on the tower on the right. But the other thing that struck us about Brooklyn College is the care that it takes with the landscape and so many of these really nice landscape areas that students take advantage of in being able to incorporate some of that into the design. So the landscape quad that I mentioned before, shown in the green box, and also transforming that sort of asphalt amphitheater maybe into something that could be quite a bit different. And what we're suggesting is something that could really be about art and sculpture and green and landscape and be a gathering place for the campus as well as for the students themselves. And then looking back at the amphitheater and then how it might look with introducing sculpture and landscape into the area. So this is very preliminary, but we think that there's an opportunity in doing this to really create a sense of place and a new image and identity, both for the arts as well as for the college. And that's it.
Thank you.
Come up, are there questions, comments? Maybe if the lights came up.
Good.
Yes.
Great.
Light lights.
I gotta tell you, this is someone hunting for a theater for a different nonprofit. This is sine qua non, really is. Is anyone here from Brooklyn College? I have a non-architectural question. What happens to the eponyms for Levinson and Gershwin? Are we talking about the famed Gershwin? Because this is a name you don't want to lose for a performing arts center. What do we do with that name? How do we not lose such a name?
To be determined.
I just, I would just say that the name Gershwin is something that... How did, do you know the history of how it became part of?
No, I do not.
We should, I just think we should find out who the Levinsons were or are. Was there a gift associated or what? It doesn't matter at this point, but the descendants are probably all dead. But are we talking about the Gershwin? And if so, that's a name that we would want to retain, I would think.
It's Sam Levinson.
Oh, the comedian?
Yes.
Oh, you definitely want to retain this. I mean, this is Brooklyn all the way until he moved to Rockaway Park. But anyway.
But unfortunately, he gave us no money for the building.
But what about, and which Gershwin are we talking about?
One of the Gershwins, I think it was Ira Gershwin. Again, they gave us, the college was very gracious in naming it for them, but we got no endowment and no money.
But we have value in the name.
Maybe there could be subtitles.
Yes. Dot, dot, dot. Well, maybe we can name some of the various, you know, performing centers.
I don't even figure something, you guys should figure something out, you know. Maybe this card or dedicated to the memory of Gershwin. I don't know, but how do you lose a name like that?
The Gershwin Professor of.
Uh huh, yes. Good point.
That's what I'll call him. Nicely done. Thank you.
I have a question. The Department of Music, the faculty offices and departmental offices, where would they be in relationship to this?
We're in the process right now of doing a study to locate where they would be, both on a temporary as well as a permanent basis. We're undertaking that just literally starting right now as to where they would be.
Their offices are in this building now?
I don't know.
Their offices are in the building now.
But I have to, this was truly a collaborative effort. And both the provosts and both the heads of music and theater and all the professors were part of this discussion. And so they sort of acknowledged that it was okay if their offices were elsewhere. We just needed to identify where we were going to put them.
Okay. Look forward to that.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
It's the next Colvin Center?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So.
It's a fabulous place. It's gonna be a good spring.
I will, I think there's another meeting.
Okay.